All right, with that in mind, I'll call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Could I have a roll call, please?
Director Grasha.
Here.
Director Sewell. Director Duncan.
Here.
Vice President Wright.
Here.
President Martin.
Present, let the record reflect that Director Sewell has a family emergency and may not be participating in the meeting today. That's an excused absence. Counselor, would you go over the rules of procedure, please?
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board of Directors, all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the Board. The President is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all Board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the President. No member of the Board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the Board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to so speak. No Board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a Board meeting, and the Board President regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Item five, public input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the Board on matters within the Board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the Board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wish to address the Board?
Mr. President, there are no members of the public on the line.
Okay. Moving on to item six, Human Resources Report. Looks like we've got a number of people, including three new hires.
Usually do that on Monday?
On Monday, yes, yes. Moving on to item seven, Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero five. A resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mission Springs Water District proclaiming a local emergency persists, re-ratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by executive order and as a NORA zero nine dash two one and re-authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the Mission Springs Water District for the period of April twenty-third through May twenty-third. It is recommended to approve the resolution twenty dash twenty-two zero five, continuing teleconference meetings for the period so stated above. Anything more to add on that at all?
Nothing.
Okay. I knew the resolution two oh two five dash five.
Well, we don't do that until Monday. This is
over Oh, okay. Sometimes we'd have to, sometimes we don't.
There have been some times where we've needed to do a study session because of the timing of it, but this time you can do it on Monday.
Yeah, okay, we'll do it on Monday. All right. Item eight, public hearing, which will be taking place on Monday. Resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash zero six to collect sewer fees on the tax rule. Is recommended to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero six, electing to collect sewer user fees on the tax rule under California Health and Safety Code five four seven zero. At and anything further on that?
I'm not really, except for that, you know, this is done annually. This is the methodology that the Board directed us to do when we decided to put the tour fees on the, on the tax, on the tax rule.
Okay.
And so I don't know if Arturo has anything he wants to add because Arturo will not be here on Monday, but I, I can handle this too. All right. Did you have anything, Arturo, that you wanted to add?
Yeah, thank you, General Manager Wollam, and thank you, President Martin, for letting me speak on this item. Yeah, the, the main reason why the Board has decided to do the public hearing and then issuing the, the letters to go out to the public to let them prepay those sewer fees. It does not cost the district anymore extra to collect those funds and deposit them where it would create another hassle for our customers to open an impound account. And a lot of them just want to prepay the district without having to worry about that on their property taxes. And just for reference, last year, we collected six hundred thousand prepaid upfront, which means we don't have to wait for December and January to, or sorry, April to collect those funds that we've already collected prior to sending the remainder accounts to the property taxes. That's, that's all I have to add to this item.
Okay.
Thank you, okay.
I have a question about that.
Sure, go ahead, Steve.
Can you tell us about how many letters went out, for instance? How many people are wrapped up in this part of the?
Right now, we have, last year's number was eight thousand eight hundred and forty-seven letters that went out. And this year is roughly nine hundred, nine thousand three hundred, simply because more connections have been made over the last year.
And, and the people from last year that paid prepaid, they're not part of this group? Is that right?
They are. That's what the letter is for, alerting them that they have the opportunity to prepay those sewer fees before we place them on the property taxes. That way, they don't have to worry about that extra payment later on in December and April. As you know, some of our customers do, are only here in the winter sometimes. And so that they don't want to deal with that and not worry about another bill that they're going to have to pay when they're not around. So that's what the main reason for doing this.
I guess my question is, is these, these people pay more than once? Are they paying annually? Because it seems like they would pay, if they, if they were prepaying, they paid one time and they wouldn't be getting another letter. What am I missing there?
This is the annual sewer fee that we have to
Oh, okay. And typically, how much is that?
Nine hundred bucks? An average unit is six hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought it was for a bigger portion of the. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on to item nine, First Amendment to the Compressed Natural Gas Vehicle Fueling Station Licensing and CNG Sales Agreement with Clean Energy. It's recommended to authorize the General Manager to execute your First Amendments to the Compressed Natural Gas Vehicle Fueling Station Licensing and CNG Sales Agreement between Mission Springs Water District and Clean Energy for the CNG Fueling Station located at one four five zero one Park Lane Desert Hot Springs. General Manager Wall.
It's, it's pretty, pretty much straightforward. We, this fueling station has been there for nearly two decades. I'll let Brian elaborate on this. It's a revenue generator. And it's used quite extensively, and they've decided that they want to keep it there. So Brian, did you want to elaborate on that?
Actually, General Manager Wollam, we were going to ask our Director of Operations, who had been working with our attorneys, to hammer through this agreement to give a short presentation.
Great. Danny?
Thank you, General Manager Wall. President Martin, members of the Board, thank you. Good afternoon. This is a little history on this. And this contract is for the operations and maintenance of a public use compressed natural gas station, fueling station. It's located on our property directly outside of our courtyard. They're on Park Lane. The initial term is, as General Manager Wollam was saying, is, is commenced back in November of two thousand and eleven. It was set to expire in two thousand and sixteen. There was an automatic renewal of consecutive five-year term, which then took it through November of twenty-one. This amendment allows it to automatically renew until November twenty-twenty of two thousand and twenty-two. Since it, it was set to expire in November twenty-one, it's been going forward as a month-to-month contract as spelled out in the initial contract while the district negotiated. There was, this has been going back for several, several months when we were contemplating the new building at the corporate yard, whether we needed that space. Part of the original agreement was we had offered special pricing on compressed natural gas for the five vehicles that we owned. We no longer own them and have no, no longer have a need for compressed natural gas. So this renewal is been negotiated so that we are now collecting a monthly rent. And that was the, the revenue generator that General Manager Wollam was speaking about. It's initially two thousand dollars per month starting in November twenty-three, which will be one year after its, its first renewal start date. I'll have a three percent annual escalator. This contract amendment is for a one-year amendment with the option to automatically renew each year for a total of five years. Either party has the option to terminate the agreement with a six-month written notice, at which point the Clean Energy Team would have, would be responsible for moving any of the improvements that are on our property. And there is no cost associated, fiscal impact associated for renewing this contract. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, is there any questions from the Board?
I have a couple. Go ahead.
Any, any questions? No?
I have a couple.
Yeah. We both do.
Okay. Mr. Grasha, go ahead.
Okay. No costs associated with this, and it's tell me if I'm assuming wrong, that if the, and when the new facility is established over on that the new, you know, when the new building is built, this, I'm assuming, does not move with it. And if it does, maybe you could elaborate on that. And if it doesn't, does it, will it require? You know, we have people there every day. I imagine they have to participate in some way of keep an eye on things. Is, is there, is there? Maybe you could just run with that. Is it, is it planned to move with us or? Okay, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna let you finish, Director Grasha. The note is not planning to be moving to, to a new location of our, our Critical Services Facility. It's going to stay where it is. We were contemplating not renewing the contract if we needed that space, if we were going to build that facility at that location. The current courtyard will maintain an active site as part of the Port and Wastewater Facility. And currently, we don't babysit or monitor. It's self-sufficient. It's protected. It has its own camera system. And it's outside of our secured corporate yard with our security system. So it, whether there's anybody there on the weekends or not, it's maintained on its own.
So, so there's no storage tanks inside of our perimeter?
Inside the perimeter, no. And, and if this does not renew after this, this process today or on Monday, excuse me, then the the Clean Energy folks would have to remove everything. That means all improvements at their cost.
So, so you're, you're confident, and it sounds like you are anyway, that that we don't have to even think about it, I guess, is what I'm hoping for. Two thousand dollars a month is nice, but that's a big burden in terms of other potential downsides, and I hope it, I hope it's worth it. So.
No, I, I can add that, General Manager Wollam, AGM Macy, there's been some concerns with some of the language. And that's what took a little while for our legal team to, to negotiate that, make sure that was, that protected all interests of the district. So.
Okay, great. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, do you have anything?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Danny, this, on the fiscal impact, credit piece on this thing. So this monthly rent to the district will be two thousand with a three percent escalator starting November twenty-three. Does the rent and the three percent start then, or does the rent start now, the three percent escalator just eighteen months now kicks in?
The rent starts now. So what it does is the cleanest way for us to have a start date is we are using the first year. It starts back this November of twenty-one. So the agreement or the amendment becomes valid or becomes executed after the Board takes action, or considers to take action, excuse me. And the, it'll be immediate rents, and it'll be less than one year because we're starting from November of twenty-one. When we hit November of twenty-two, that'll start the timeframe of the one year, and then we'll start an escalator. I'm sorry, escalator from one year from that. So we'll have one full year, like if it's eighteen months. I forget what it is, Director Duncan.
Okay. Well, it was just a little confusing the way I read it. I didn't know if all of it started November next year or just the three percent.
Just the three percent.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Sorry about that confusion.
No.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on to item ten. Award of Contract for Engineering Services During Construction of the Regional Water Reclamation Facility Projects. Recommended to authorize the General Manager to award a contract for the engineering services during construction of the Regional Water Reclamation Facility Project to AE COM, C O M, Technical Services, Inc., in the amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand forty-eight dollars. Okay, General Manager?
Thank you. The, this is, process is, is pretty routine. When we get ready to do, to construct a project, especially this size, there will always inevitably be a number of questions regarding the design. And so we usually prepare a contract with the design engineer to help the contractor understand some of the design questions. It will happen, especially in projects this size. It's inevitable. And here to explain that is our engineering manager, Mr. Eric Weck.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Good. Good afternoon, President Martin, Vice President Wright, and members of the Board. Action item ten, your agenda, and your agenda packet pertains to the Award of Contract for Technical Engineering Support Services for the construction of the Regional Water Reclamation Facility Project. Having engineering services available for the construction of the Regional Water Reclamation Facility is important, and that it'll allow the engineer of record, which is AE COM, to be a part of the construction team and provide the following. Provide support, review, and approval of technical aspects of submittals for equipment and materials. Responding to requests for information from the contractor. Preparing revised drawings and specifications when needed. Reviewing and determining the validity of contract changes and attending construction meetings. Now typically, for large and complex construction projects like this one, staff contracts with the engineer of record to ensure that the design intent is carried through until project completion. Being the engineer of record, AE COM is familiar with the subtleties and the details of the equipment for the new plant, and having them on the team will ensure that the project meets the district's needs. The proposed contract will be structured on a time and materials basis and will limit costs to only services provided. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the Board?
I, I have a couple.
Okay, Mr. Grasha?
So this, this plan, there were a lot of people that, a lot of firms, I think, that had their fingers on this during the, you know, initial phase, and that was up to the point where it was approved. This is an additional engineering firm that will be involved. It, it did something pop up along the way that made us think we needed more help, or how, how did this pop up?
Yes, sir. This is the same engineer, and this is the engineer of record that prepared and designed the treatment plant. And for large projects like this, it's typical to bring and have them almost on retainer to have them ready to answer questions of a technical nature from the contractor and respond to requests for information and things like that. So this is not an additional engineer. It's the same engineer that designed the contract or that designed the plant, sir.
I was under the impression that TKE designed it and that I was shocked really when, after we approved it, we were handed a contract for three and a half million dollars, which seemed completely dumbstruck by that, really. And now here we have another one. And I'm just wondering.
Somebody please explain the process.
Well, I, I, I understand that, that, you know, when you and I appreciate your comment, but, you know, when you approve a project for fifty million dollars or more, I think it's much more than that, fifty-one plus. And you're they roll out a list of people that are going to help throughout the project phase, you know, design phase, all the, and then pretty soon you have a three and a half million dollar bonus, it looked like to me. It was handed to TKE for doing a good job and convincing us we needed the plant. Now what? It looks like we're hiring another engineering firm to add into you know, because I never heard of this firm. All I know is TKE and a, a group of companies that were working beneath him to, to help. And then you threw that three and a half million dollar, you know, gift at him for, it seemed like holding our hand for a year and a half, convincing we needed, it seemed like a bonus. It was offensive. If I had, listen, if I had known, if I had known that he was going to get a listen.
Got it all wrong, Steve.
I may have it all wrong, but this is the
And let us explain it.
Well, explain why the three and a half million dollar contract was let to the engineer that was supposed to not have skin in the game, or apparently he did. It's, it's mind-boggling that you
At this point, at this point, I'd like to bring in Brian Macy, who can perhaps explain some of the questions that you have, Steve.
Thank you.
President Martin, thank you. Director Grasha, you bring up some key points with the way it's may have been presented at certain times, but we did not have an engineer on staff when we started the started the design of this project. Therefore, we used TKE to supplement our staff, and they were acting as our program manager to oversee other consultants, which included TK, or at the time, URS to design the regional plant. That regional plant or URS during the design of that plant was taken over by AE COM. So AE COM is now the, the record or engineer of record, as our engineering manager mentioned. And there we continue to be the engineer of record and hold liability related to the design. TKE, again, acting as a staff, an extension of staff to try to hold down costs throughout the project was then through a public process, open qualifications, then went after the construction management contract, which was also necessary during construction to make sure that our needs and our specifications were followed. They won that over several other firms. So it had nothing to do about the fact that they were part of our project, project management team. It had everything to do about that they were the best qualified for the inspection and construction management. AE COM is still necessary to answer any technical questions related to their design. Separate process. So that is standard, it's standard for a project of this size, and we actually do that for projects smaller than that. In some instances, where TK oversees a consultant. When it goes to construction, TK then helps us, then again, it's as an extension of our staff to then oversee some of the construction and maintenance activities.
It, it, it would have been appropriate to tell the Board early on that at the conclusion of this, we were going to be giving a bonus to TKE of three and a half million dollar contract for holding our hand for the last year and a half, convincing us that the work was being done. It's highly unfortunate that it was done this way. And I can tell by the smirk on Nancy's face that she thinks she got away with it. And it's quite bothersome. It's a conflict of interest for him to have done that the entire time he was sitting there, knowing that that three and a half million dollars waited for him, if he could just convince the Board to approve the project, which he did very well. And then he got his payday, an extra one.
Getting in the wheat, we're getting in the weeds here.
No, we're not. We're just
You're cut off, you're cut off, okay? Director Wright has a comment she'd like to make on that.
I'd just like to say, Director, Director Grasha, if you would just pay attention to meetings, we've gone through this whole thing. This is the third year you've been on this board. If you don't understand the process, don't sit there and yell and say that people are taking advantage and saying stuff that's not true about one of our engineers. I mean, it's just
Everything I said is true.
Meetings, you might know what's going on.
Everything I said is true. He was given a three and a half million dollar contract at the meeting after the project was approved. This Board was never informed that that money was going to be transferred.
Yes, the Board was, I recall it.
Bring it out. Bring it out. My time is not up. If I don't get my ten cents in here, I'm going to do it on the internet, because what you
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Any other comments? Randy, do you have any comments or questions? No? Okay, all right. Nancy, anything further?
No, I, I was here the whole time, and we went through the whole thing, and over the last couple of years, this process. And it's everything that the staff had told us that they were going to do, they've done.
Yes, yes, I recall that as well. Okay, do you want to add anything, General Manager?
No, other than the fact that this is extremely standard, and we got, and it was all done in a competitive process. Nothing about, and it's all been very transparent. Anybody wants to see anything, they're welcome to it.
Look at the minutes of all the meetings.
And I, you know, it is unfortunate that, you know, we even would think otherwise, but we do. Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item eleven, two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-two, New Meter Installation Capital Budget Augmentations. Recommended to authorize the General Manager to increase fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-two capital budget for new meters and new service installation costs in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and augment the capital improvement job number one one seven zero nine to three hundred and ninety thousand. General Manager?
Thank you. This is actually the result of very good news. This is not because of the meter replacement program. It's unrelated. This is because we have growth. We have development. We have building going on, and we need to increase our our inventory in order to handle the, the new building that's going on in the valley. And I think, Arturo, did you have anything that you would like to add to this?
Thank you, General Manager Wollam. I think you said it perfectly. I don't have anything else to add, unless there's any questions that I can answer.
Any questions from the Board, Nancy? Okay, Randy, any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a total of three screens going here, and my mouse gets moved and I can't unmute myself, so I apologize for that. Where's, where's this additional two, two hundred and twenty thousand coming from, Arturo?
We're nine months into the fiscal year, and the number of installations have doubled over the last year. We base our budget based on the prior year, a couple of years connections, and this year just happened to be that many more. And we're expecting around two hundred and twenty-six additional ones through the end of the, of the year, the fiscal year, so three more months. And we have a lot of development on the pipeline that needs these meters. That's where all of this is coming from. And I just want to remind the Board that when these customers connect to, to the district, that is where the revenue comes from to, to augment those costs.
So we're actually ahead of schedule for these meter placements?
Yeah, this is all purely developer-driven. Yeah, there's more activity in the, in the city, as you can see, and that's reflected in what we're doing here at the district.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the Board? Moving on.
I, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
The two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that'll be going to the that'll be going to the contractor, I guess he's, that covers the cost of the meter and the installation, and I guess the integration into the system and all. Um what what uh will be the amount collected from the developers for the meter fee for that work?
The uh collection of uh fees from this is basically based on uh usage, and we cannot estimate that other than uh per the rate study, we know that we're collecting uh that revenue uh to make up for what it costs the district uh to place those meters in the ground. Um and I just want to remind uh the board also that uh the only payment we're making to the contractor is for the meters themselves. The employees of the district are the ones who are installing them on the ground and connecting to people's homes um and also to the uh to the new portal uh that we have. So uh thus, uh the fees um Director Gasha again are gonna be primarily once they start using the water. Um and we cannot estimate that at this point until they obviously connect.
I I thought that uh when a developer came in for a permit, there was a fee attached to to hook to the system.
Is that There is. There is. Uh I can get that number for you. I don't have it in front of me, but I can definitely get it for you.
But that, yeah, it sounds like that fee doesn't include this, is that right, or?
It does. It it is uh it is supposed to cover the entire cost to the district to install those meters um in the ground.
Okay. Well, it would be nice uh if you could uh pass that on, what that would be to determine what uh what the real costs are associated with this. But thank you, and I I expect this to continue, and you might be back again soon. It doesn't look like this building thing is gonna stop for a little while and and uh good to see it happening, Philip. Thank you.
General Manager, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think it was explained pretty clearly. We we're, we just, we just need to put these in the inventory and then they will pay us for these meters. Simple.
Okay, moving on to discussion items.
Well, it's simple, except you can't say how much you're gonna charge.
Moving on to discussion items, Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility update. General Manager.
I, well, um we will probably do the regional plant on uh Monday because Steve is uh is gone today, so.
Steve led better.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Item thirteen, Critical Services Center and Administrative Building Update. Same thing?
No.
You can do it today? Okay, go ahead.
Uh thank you, President Martin. Yes, very short. Um we were hoping to have new renderings to share with the board at this particular meeting. Unfortunately, there were some questions that were going back and forth regarding uh backup generation or portable generation here at the Critical Services Building that has sort of delayed us in getting that, also working through some of the excuse me, the evaporative coolers versus uh A C units in the uh operations building. But uh we do hope to bring uh new renderings to you back in the month of May. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Um everybody take a look at the minutes over the weekend uh for March third, twenty twenty-two. That was a special meeting workshop, March eighth, twenty twenty-two, closed session. March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, study session, and the minutes from March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Take a look at those.
Uh Nancy? Comment, yes. Um I believe that our closed session was on March ninth, not March eighth.
Okay.
It was Wednesday, March ninth.
We'll get a clarification on that to confirm, but that your memory is pretty good on matters like that, so. Okay.
Are the uh registered demands part of the consent calendar?
Yes.
Uh I I I would like to uh have a question about a couple of those items, so maybe we could uh pull that for the meeting. Unless you want to talk about it now, I think it'd be better on Monday, since everybody's
Uh let's do it now. Go ahead.
Perhaps uh somebody could explain the three thousand dollar expenditure to the Rotary Club? I have not seen that uh amount of money uh transfer to their account uh up to now, and it's
That would, that was for our participation in the uh big heart, I believe, isn't it, Marion? And it's typically, it's what we've done almost every year to be a sponsor.
Well, typically you buy tickets for the dinner, but uh this was three thousand dollars, and at the same time, I see one of our uh stellar employees received a great big award that was splashed all over our social media. I just wondered if there was a quid pro quo there, we'll pay you the six, three grand to uh to do this, and it was a little scary uh to think.
No, no, that's not it. And and the and the this sponsorship did include the tickets to the uh to the event.
We were listed as a sponsor, I believe, is that correct? And and uh and we weren't the the only uh agency that was there that sponsored people there, so to suggest for a second that 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 was some kind of quid pro quo is nonsense, but anyway.
I wasn't suggesting, I I was just
Okay, I apologize.
Question whether or not that uh it was typical to pay them three thousand dollars and at the same time receive an award for one of our employees. And and it's just seemed like you could find a better way to do that, so it doesn't have the appearance
Every agency that was, every agency that was recognized at that event had an employee that they recognized. Ours happened to be so, the one we selected.
Desert Water Agency was a sponsor also.
Yes. And so is the city, so are a number of different agencies in the the school district.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't see that they uh had a an employee of the year uh uh given a uh an award, and I didn't see it splashed all over social media as if it was some kind of a without the asterisk that said, oh, and we paid three thousand dollars at for the same uh function. So it's just, just pay, uh it gives a a pail of uh you know, suspicion, if you will, for those that uh might have an interest in us.
What other questions do you have, Mr. Gasha?
Uh you answered it perfectly. You paid three thousand dollars and you got a great big uh award for uh an employee. I think it's uh something that runs right along uh the lines of typical business for the uh for the Mission Springs Water District. Right along with uh refusing to uh um allow directors access to uh critical data on uh
You're getting, you're getting off track here, uh Steve, so we're gonna move on. Uh On correspondence, we have a thank you letter from the Heart to Heart Team, item sixteen. That's a nice, nice letter from that, and a thank you card from Mission Lakes Country Club. Also, take a look at that, and uh if you have any comments, we'll save those for Monday. Directors' Reports. Um does anybody want to do their director's report today? Nancy?
Okay.
Vice President Wright, please use your mic. Thank you. Uh yeah, on um what was it? Uh Wednesday, was it the third of the sixteenth? Yes, uh March sixteenth, I guess it was. Went to the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District for a Riverside County Special Districts Meeting. This organization is the uh organization that votes for uh the two LAFCO seats that are on um that are on LAFCO, that the the two, excuse me, special district seats that are on LAFCO, just like the cities, um their their organization uh votes and puts the two city people in, and the same thing with the county that puts the two county board supervisors in. So this is the group that does that. It's a, it's the Riverside County uh like a a a chapter, Riverside County Chapter of California Special Districts Association. And the district attorney was there and he mostly talked, talked about so what did he talk about? What was it? Come on, you guys. Fentanyl, that's right, fentanyl, the drugs coming across into the into Riverside County, and it it's just horrifying what's going on. But anyway, I that was, I think I sent you an email on this organization. They're kind of, they're they're having a little bit difficulty time, I think, getting people to come and whatnot, and to really understand what this organization is all about. It's a very important organization in Riverside County. Um so I don't know, maybe in the future we might think about, I don't know, somehow, they got a good board, they had the whole board there, they had a good board. I know they just maybe need a little bit of help to push to give, to let other special districts know it's out there and what it what it's about, because there should be a lot of special districts who belong to this. They should be participating in it. I just think that the word is just not out there.
And I think part of the the reason that things kind of is because of the, I think this was the first in-person meeting they've had in almost three years.
It might have been, but even before that, they remember the Aqua, but Aqua conferences, we went to these meetings and they, you know, when they were trying to get it going and stuff. Um anyway, uh I I did, I did go to the E and E uh Energy and Environmental Resources Committee meeting today for Steve Ag and also the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission. I might as well do that now, because next next month it'll be old news, and I won't remember what I said, what they said. Just a couple little things on there. Um I was kind of interesting, there was a report about the uh the tamarisk trees that uh were out, are out there, I believe it's twentieth and and Palm, right? That uh a couple of years ago, we went on a tour with the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission and took, they they, everybody on the the commission ended up going on a tour, but we went on one um with just what Arden and um myself and a couple other people who couldn't go on the regular one. But anyway, uh and they went and showed us about all the tamarisk trees that were out there and all the junk that was out there around uh close to wells and whatnot. And and so they hired some people to go out and to eradicate the the tamarisk trees as much as possible, as much as you can eradicate them. So now, flip it forward a couple of years later, they went out there to check it out, and well, lo and behold, there's now water actually bubbling out of the ground right there, which it used to do. It's it by, it's the oasis like out there uh uh on Palm and twentieth, I guess it is. And so it's actually coming back to life due to getting rid of those tamarisk trees. Everybody was real excited about that one. Uh and there's also, they they hit the milestone of a hundred thousand acres of conserved land that the C V C C has purchased, has in their possession. Um so that that was a big deal today there too. Okay, that that was about it on them. Okay, the Energy and Environmental Resources Committee. Let's see, what did we do on that? They talked about the sweeping program, uh the street sweeping program, which really doesn't have anything to do with us, but the air quality issues, it does have to do with the the state legislative uh automatic roof solar permitting program, which is something that is being put together, I think it's a federal, now I guess it's a state, excuse me, say, it's a state that it's a program that cities will have, and this company or these people will help these cities put this software together so that they, when they do a solar rooftop permit, they will have this software, and it'll make it very efficient and quick and easy. I guess it's not so right now, and so they were, that's something that's that C V C C was working on. And uh that's about the major major items on those that have to do with us.
Director Duncan, do you have any meetings and stuff you attended?
Yes, I did. Uh okay, going back to March first, Desert Water Agency Board Meeting. Uh the only thing that really affected us was uh they spent a lot of time doing their maps for their redistricting. Uh I had put that vote off a couple of times, we'll come up to that here in a minute. C V W D, March eighth, Board Meeting. Uh they're also redistricting. Their uh demographer came in, they've passed a a map so far. Or they heading that way, uh four to one. They, we're talking about the uh the Sigma, the annual report, the twenty twenty-one report that they submitted for the Indio and Mission Creek Subbasins. It's a twenty twenty-one report, but D W R has up to two years to respond to it. So really kind of, I don't know, it doesn't make sense there. Uh one that does affect us Lotus, uh under the Trump administration, uh the rules were changed where you know, if it's a dry wash up in a valley somewhere, the seas rain once a year, it's not really navig- you can't navigate that water. Uh so it fell out of the Lotus Plan, if you will. The Biden administration has rolled that back to the nineteen ninety-six definition. So for drilling and putting in new sewer systems or or uh pipelines, whatever we want, we're now back to the old Lotus Rules. March fifteenth, D W A Board Meeting. Uh again, most of the time was spent on uh the maps. The new funding by D W R for the Delta Convenance Project now sits at fifteen point nine billion dollars. D W A's portion of that right now is five point one million. And I know this actually falls under April. But again, like Nancy said, by then it's gonna be old news. Uh April fifth, Board Meeting. The D W A uh voted on their map, they adopted map two point one. Uh several speakers for and against the map. If you remember, that's the one that we uh we supported and asked them to vote for. They did that, adopted that one. I happen to run into Joe Stewart um since that meeting, and he said that um our letter was part of his decision, as well as some other comments he had, some other letters he had uh received were were part of it, but he wanted to mention our letter publicly during the meeting so that was recognized as part of the official uh decision-making for him. But he wanted to make sure we got credit for that, so I thanked him for that. And that's it for me.
Mr. Gasha, did you attend any meetings in March?
I did. I had the honor of uh being invited to be the guest speaker uh at the uh Palm Springs Masonic Association last week, the the Palm Springs Masonic Association was founded in Palm Springs in the nineteen thirties, the first service organization in the Coachella Valley. And uh it was a great honor to be able to share my ideas about water management in the desert. The uh group uh is so intertwined with water, in fact, the uh original, or the first uh president of the Desert Water Agency Board was a uh the the um grand uh worshipful master, I guess they call him, uh of the lodge. At the same time, he was president of the board, Jeremy Crocker was a member, the entire Hicks family who uh started the uh Palm Springs Water Company, uh reme- uh uh original members of the uh organization, as well as the uh impetus for the creation of the retail side of the uh um Desert Water Agency. So I got to share my ideas about where things are today and about how things uh uh progressed from uh the nineteen sixties when the uh agency was formed and how Jeremy Crocker became the first employee of the uh uh Desert Water Agency as the general manager, and uh it was a hit, the room was full, and uh I was proud to have gotten through without tripping over. It's the first time I've ever uh uh carried on as a public speaker in any form, really. I've introduced a few people at a few meetings, but never had to be the standalone uh main speaker in an event, so I was pretty proud of myself for not fainting, and uh I thought it went very well, and I was asked back uh at a future time to uh update uh the community uh once again uh sometime over the next few months, so it's a and it was an extraordinary opportunity, and I think I represented of, represented our agency well, and uh look forward to uh being involved in more opportunities like that as we go forward.
Hey, thank you. General Manager's Report.
All right, thank you very much. Um they uh
Mr. Wallam, your mic, please.
Uh I am, I apologize. Uh the only thing I want to add today is that I'm gonna have Brian, before we get into the finance report and the uh and the public affairs report, um I wanted to have the uh Brian give us an update. He's been participating in the development of the uh potential new Chrome six standard for the uh state being proposed. Um and you know, I think everybody should understand that the only standard that we are under today is the federal standard, which we are completely incom- the only standard that we are under today is the federal standard, which we are completely in compliance with and have always been. So with that, Brian, would you like to give us some history on what's going on so the board can be, uh, current?
Thank you, General Manager Wom. Uh, President Martin, members of the board, uh, it's a pleasure to, to give you this update regarding Chrome six. Uh, just going back in history, we've been tracking Chrome six and, uh, the maximum contaminant level related to chromium or hexavanic chromium for decades. Specifically, in the past ten years, going back to August two thousand thirteen, uh, the Department of Public Health proposed the first uh, maximum contaminant level for chromium six, uh, or started talking about the minimum content, maximum contaminant level. In April two thousand fourteen, the Board of Health submits a regulate, a rigorous regulations package to the Office of Administrative Law for the review for compliance of an Administrative Procedure Act, which basically sets the maximum contaminant level and then all of the, uh, requirements. If the regulations are not met, it was approved in May two thousand fourteen. Therefore, in July two thousand fourteen, the maximum contaminant eleven for hexavanic chrome, chromium did become effective. It, that MCL at that time was ten parts per billion. However, in July two that twenty twenty, twenty seventeen, the Superior Court of Sacramento County invalidates the hexavanic chromium MCL and orders the state water board to adopt a new MCL. Uh, the reason that they invalidated the MCL was because they were looking, they did not look at the cost effectiveness and how it related to small systems. Therefore, the state had to go back and redo those cost estimates and relook at was ten the right number for small systems or even large system for that amount. Therefore, let's fast forward to most recently, November twenty twenty, the state water board publishes a preliminary concurrents data and treatment estimate costs and holds public workshops on cost estimates. November twenty twenty-one, the state water board publishes a notice of preparation of a draft environmental impact report as it relates to Chrome six and the maximum contaminant level. Met March twenty twenty-two, the state water board, uh, publishes a notice of public workshops and opportunity for public comment on the administrative draft. That those workshops were held on the seventh and fifth of April, where staff attended both of those public workshops. In those public workshops, the state went at great length to talk about the cost of Chrome six treatment and the impact to all systems, small and large. The maximum contaminant level as it stands now, as it was presented in the workshops, is expected to remain at the same ten parts per billion that was established back in two thousand and fourteen. As a summary of our Chrome six sampling data here at the district, back in July twenty fourteen, we tested all ten wells, all production wells, three wells tested at or above the ten parts per billion of that MCL. Those three wells continue to be tested as required as part of the, the compliance measures. When the, when the regulation went away, obviously we stopped testing on a consistent basis as required. However, we did have to continue testing of these wells on a three-year basis. In two thousand and seventeen, we tested again all ten production wells. Five wells at that time were at or above the ten parts per billion. Again, in twenty twenty, when we tested again as part of our tri-annual, five wells tested above, at or above. So some of the key points that I want to bring up about the results of our Chrome six here in the valley and what we are moving forward with is from a contamination perspective. The water quality standards or water quality in the Coachella Valley as it relates to Chrome six really hasn't changed. What has changed is the regulatory compliance measures or contaminant level that we are now measured against. Right now, we are working very diligently to look at the, the trends that we were seeing back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, what we see today and the available technologies that are there to help us treat and meet if the ten parts per billion is adopted again. If it is adopted again, is expected to be adopted sometime in twenty twenty-three. And because of our size of our agency, the compliance would be required in twenty twenty-five. So we continue to monitor this, uh, constituent and, and hope to bring back to you more information as it becomes available.
Okay, good, excellent. Uh, General Manager, do you have anything you want to add?
No, but I can tell you that like all other constituents, if it becomes a standard, we will be prepared to meet it.
Okay, right. Nancy, do you have any comments you want to make?
No, I think, I don't think so, except for thanks, thanks for that, um, background on the, uh, that, are they, they looking at twenty or twenty-five, do you think? Have they, do you have any idea?
They looked at that, um, previously and they looked at it again as part of the cost alternatives. But where they're, where they presented, they were presenting back at the ten parts per billion as established, uh, several years before. So they looked at it again as, as different cost perspectives than where they are, if you will, the cost versus, uh, the benefit. But they felt that ten was still appropriate.
And, and what was it? The feds were at fifty, right?
Correct, correct.
They're still at fifty.
Correct.
So California wants to go way lower than what's.
Correct. The total chromium, uh, both, uh, you're in the United States for US EPA as well as, um, world, I forget what the world, uh, Regulation Agency is, but it's also at fifty. So yes, California is following a similar template, if you will, for arsenic and, and nitrates and being below both the federal standard.
We're also partnering with other agencies to research different treatment technologies and some are more expensive than others. But it should be noted that this will be expensive if, you know, we, but we, we do have some treatment options that we're hoping will be accepted, that will reduce our costs substantially.
Okay. Director Duncan, do you have any comments or questions?
No, um, just that I know the technology has changed on treating Chrome six. I'm glad we didn't dump a whole truckload of money into, uh, treatment systems that would be outdated probably. Uh, certainly overpriced if this, uh, point ten comes back in again.
Okay. Director Grusha, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm thrilled that this, uh, agency has finally brought this up in the public domain and it's something that needed to happen years ago and should have been ongoing. So that, uh, there can be a, uh, you know, a level of education that could be adopted by board members that are responsible for this. It's my understanding that, um, with the fi, the five wells that are five or six and with, and when you deduct those that aren't in service or sidelined for one reason or another, it appears that almost every single, uh, rate payer that we have is being served, uh, water that is unsafe for human consumption in, uh, the, uh, terms of, uh, the way the State Department of Health and now the, uh, State, uh, Water Resources Control Board, uh, feel, uh, it, it should be to say that it was, uh, uh, at fifty, uh, parts per billion is disingenuous. The part of the, uh, uh, that ruling was not really, uh, it was only set aside for further discussion. And they had that discussion and it was rean, is about, about to be reinstated. But, um, the, the reality is we've known this was coming all along. You even approved the twenty million dollar rate increase to fix it long, long ago and said at that time that within four years you'd have that, this problem solved. Well, that money was collected. Uh, I, I guess it's sitting in the bank, so we're good there. But I also think that, uh, that needs to be taken out of the, uh, equation when we're talking about other projects like building new buildings and all these other things that you've got, uh, on the, on the table for, uh, this agency. Until that, uh, public safety, public health safety measure is fully, uh, uh, abated. Uh, I don't think, uh, this agency should continue to move forward with any of these, uh, projects like, uh, new buildings, uh, uh, anywhere. So that's just my feeling. I think the public health is number one. And vanity projects should fall way down the list. But I have a feeling with this board that won't be the case. Thank you.
Really kind of interesting how he was so for the building when he was, was gonna have it where he wanted it at. Isn't that interesting? He was just so for it. Thought it was the best thing to happen to his community. They needed that for a morale check. Needed a real good boost and they, that, uh, finished the building was gonna be their boost.
And I still.
Property he wanted to be on, not the property it should be on.
It's not your turn to talk. You're talking over one of our, our vice presidents, so please stop. You want to add anything to that, Brian? Any, any question about it being unhealthy for, uh, uh, anything exceeding five parts per billion?
No, I just reiterate that the water quality in the Coachella Valley has been the same since human, humans started inhabiting this area. It's just the change in regulation and Mission Springs Water District has always met the water quality standards established by the state. Whether the compo, whether Chrome six is in or out, we will continue to monitor and make sure that we serve water to our customers, uh, as cheaply as we possibly can. That's always our foremost concern is making sure that we meet the water quality standards and we do it as cheaply as possible.
It will be safe and reliable.
Okay, excellent. Um, moving on to, uh, District Council comments.
So we have no closed session?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you were done with your General Manager's Report. Okay. Oh, okay.
Mr. Wallen, your mic.
Uh, we, uh, okay, Arturo, would you do the finance report right now?
Sure. Can you see it on the screen?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, General Manager Wallen, uh, President Wright and members of the board. Uh, this will be a quick presentation of the February, uh, income statement for the district. Um, we are still trending ahead, uh, for the year. Um, a little bit, uh, with the expenses catching up now that the district has been open to the public. Um, and all the business that we have to conduct because of the developers, uh, coming in town and, uh, increasing the need for those costs. Um, and that puts us at two point four million dollars, uh, net income, uh, for February twenty-eighth. Um, and I just want to point down here where we are, uh, in, in the cash, um, accounts at forty-eight million dollars compared to thirty-eight million dollars of last year. Uh, the primary reason for the increase has been the collection of some of the grants that were outstanding. Um, and, uh, some of that was the rate adjustment, however, uh, not the ten million dollars itself. And, um, that is basically the presentation on the combined funds for the district as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. And I'll answer any questions. Have you have any?
Okay. Any questions, Nancy? Randy, any questions?
Uh, yeah, actually comment more than a question. Uh, I picked up this book out of my box. I was in the district, uh, a couple of days ago, the one that Arturo put up. This is a, this is an outstanding, uh, report, Arturo. Thank you for putting this together. Um, it includes the, a cover letter from our auditors. It's very detailed into our finances and gives great verbal explanation of, of every line item on there. And what came to mind, uh, Pamela Edmondson was in our meeting, uh, I don't know if it was last month or month before. And was having a hard time locating our finances. Is this report available online as it is?
It is. Uh, it, it word by word, it's a PDF version of this on the website. And, uh, we do put that every year in addition to the budget, uh, under the, uh, financial, uh, portion of the, uh, the website, yes.
Okay, is it, is it marked, is it pretty obvious the report with the date? So I can, I can direct her to this?
It is. Um, it is called the twenty twenty-one Financial Statements.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, I'd like to just, uh, say, I'd like to, uh, back up, go back on what Randy just said and I agree, I agree with Randy. In fact, what this thing will do is that people won't be able to spread lies about our finances because this report tells what's really happening and there's, there's no room for lies in it. So, thank you, Arturo.
Good job. Uh, Director Grusha, do you have any comments on our, on the financials?
Uh, I have no comment. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Okay, also, uh, next I would like to have Marion do the public affairs report.
Absolutely. Marion, take it away.
Thank you, um, General Manager Wallen and good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. Um, I have a short PowerPoint today that I'd like to share, um, to talk, highlight what we've done in the last month. And additional information is of course available in your packet. Uh, April is shaping up just to be as busy as March was as it relates to community events and outreach. Last week, we had a very informative meeting with residents at Mission Lakes Country Club, in which we discussed our groundwater quality protection efforts and the current status of assessment District eighteen. We had more than sixty people in attendance, plus others tuned in on the Mission Lakes Facebook account and watched live online. I'd especially like to thank Engineering Manager Eric Weck, Operations Manager Danny Friend and General Manager Wallen for their assistance with the presentation, um, and with the excellent Q and A that followed. Uh, later this month, we will be at Cabot's Museum and then we'll also be at the Desert Hot Springs Library for two additional events. And we are also booking, uh, uh, appointments right now for our mud, May blood drive. So lots of things going on in the events. Um, and speaking events, we also have set a date for the Regio Water Reclamation Plant groundbreaking ceremony, which will be held on June tenth at eight AM. We have started sending out invite, email invitations this week. I have, also have hard copies of the invitation. If anyone would like some, please just stop by and I have some for you. We are inviting federal, state and local elected officials, business and community leaders, media and other water district staff and management um, to the event. On March twenty-eighth, you may have heard that Governor Newsom issued an executive order calling on the state to conserve water as we head into the third year of drought. California had its driest January, February and March ever recorded. The levels of most of California's biggest reservoirs are far below average and our snow packs are also standing just between twenty-eight and forty-three percent of normal. In his executive order, the governor or asked the State Water Resources Control Board to evaluate the adoption of regulations banning irrigation of non-functional turf such as decorative grass that's adjacent to large industrial institutional and commercial buildings. He also called on the board to consider requiring urban water suppliers to activate at a minimum level two of their water shortage contingency plans. These plans required by state law have been developed by local water agencies to navigate drought and each is planned. Each plan is customized based on the agency's unique infrastructure and management. Triggering level two of these plans involves implementing water conservation actions prepared for a water shortage level of up to twenty percent. Under the plan, the following are our shortage level two demand reduction activities. The first action is the one that's getting the most attention in the media right now, and that is a limit of outdoor spray irrigation during daylight hours. Of course, there would be exceptions for, uh, leak checks or maintenance issues. Also on the list, restaurants would be required to serve water by request only. I've already reached out to several restaurants in our area, um, and letting them know that this could potentially be coming down the line. And I've also offered them table tents and outreach materials and at least one, um, has already taken us up on that offer. Um, encouraging the use of non-potable water for construction purposes. Uh, discouragement of overseeding. Uh, this is with the idea that if you overseed, you usually use more water to get the new grass started. Uh, my favorite is the Expanded Public Information Campaign. Uh, we will be adding some of the state's save our water materials and we'll be working with the CD Water Count, Counts Group, um, who is currently evaluating options for an expanded valley-wide campaign. The group is meeting that again next Tuesday and we will be discussing that again at that time. Um, next on the list is increased water waste patrols. I have spoken to our customer service team and we have a system already in place, which uses door hangers and, uh, also tracks customers. But most importantly, we'll be able to leverage this system to expand our outreach and communications with our field staff and our customers. And we'll be able to document what we are, that we are actively working with our, uh, customers to fix issues as we come across them. And lastly, the reduction of hydrant and dented flushing. I did do a quick check with our management team and it sounds like some flushing will still be required, however, however, we can minimize this without impacting the system. I do want to note that under stage two, we do not, does not include the expansion of our current rebate incentive programs. Should the state move in that direction and funds become available, we have developed the framework for expanded rebate programs for items such as dishwashers and also evaporative cooler tune-up programs. Once funding opens up, we will be able to move quickly and roll these programs out. Next Wednesday, the state board is hosting a webinar to provide an overview of the draft emergency regulations proposal for future consideration. And at that meeting, we expect clarifications on the definition of non-functional turf and the requirements for moving into stage two. DWA provided a similar informational update to their board last week on the subject. And this Tuesday, just this past Tuesday, CVWD's board took action to adopt several of their stage two measures. And this Tuesday, just this past Tuesday, CVWD's board took action to adopt several of their stage two measures along with increasing their turf rebates to three dollars per square foot. Depending upon the direction set by the state board, they will likely need to revisit this with their board again and officially move into stage two. We will continue to keep this board apprised of the outcome of next week's meeting. And lastly, I think I was one slide ahead there. I wanted to also draw your attention to our new customers, our new Customer Connect web portal launch slated for next month. Starting May second, the Public Affairs Team will be promoting signups to the portal using direct email blasts, bill inserts, paid and non-paid media and social media. We are also reaching out to local clubs to schedule portal demonstrations and are even planning to bring a laptop along to help customers log in and establish their accounts at these meetings. Working with our marketing firm, we have created two videos, a thirty second pre-roll teaser video and a longer understanding your portal video, which I'd like to preview for you right now.
Have you ever wondered how much water your household uses daily or if you might have a leak? Mission Springs Water District is making it easier than ever to monitor your water usage, set alerts and pay your bills through our Customer Connect Water Smart Portal. This easy to use online water management tool and payment portal is free for MSWD customers. With it, you can view and pay bills, track daily water usage, set up auto payments, sign up to receive leak alerts, view tips on how to save water and money, and even see how your usage compares to similar households. To get started, go to mswd.org forward slash Customer Connect to log in or create an account. All you need is your account number and a zip code. On the home screen, there's an overview of what the portal offers. You can see your monthly bill and how it compares to previous months. In this example, water use is up thirty four percent compared to the previous month. My daily water use shows current usage and compares it to the same billing period from the past two years. It's currently down eighteen percent from last year, which is great. On the right side of the screen are notifications to help you become more familiar with the portal. You can also see your water score, which is currently categorized as efficient and ranked in the top twenty percent. Way to go, water saver. This is where you can compare your water usage to other households. Let's dive a little deeper into daily water use by clicking on view use. This system is detecting continuous use with water running at an estimated rate of one gallon per hour. That adds up to ninety nine gallons since January first and could be contributing to the rise in this month's water bill. Be sure to sign up for alerts to notify you if this is happening at your home. If you click on the investigate leak tab, you are guided through different steps to find the source and can record where the leak was detected. Scrolling down, you'll see a chart of how you are using your water. It estimates your most significant water usage, such as showers, toilets, faucets and washing machines. Use your computer or mobile device to log on at mswd.org forward slash Customer Connect.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. That was excellent. Very, very well done. Very well done. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just got a quick question or comment, whatever. Marion, could you send me the the invite? Just just by itself, I couldn't figure out how to get it out of our packet. And so I could email it maybe to the women's club so they could put it in there. There's other, you know, things like that, so I could utilize it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Randy, you have any quick questions or comments?
Yeah, Marion, CBWD Tuesday, there was a forever debate on their water conservation thing. But they're also offering rebates for this turf removal, but at a different tier, they're talking about putting in desert scape, even gravel rather than plants or whatnot. Do we have anything like that in place? Or are we strictly just pulling the grass out is is enough? But what's our plan?
Currently, you have to replace it with some foliage. You can't go all rocks. You can do the artificial turf. And I believe part of what they're looking at is increasing it if case somebody wants to do a zero scape where they're not going to use any water, like if they're going to use artificial turf. And that's part of some what they're going to bring back to their board is some ideas of how they might structure that.
Okay, all right, perfect. Yeah, that was a that was a very long discussion.
Director Grusha, you have any comments?
No, thank you. Very good report. I always appreciate your reports. They're very professional and it's good to see this agency raise the bar on its public relations campaigns. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item twenty one, Director's comments. Director Grusha.
Well, my I guess my only comment tonight, we got to the good stuff throughout the meeting would be to in response to a question about my support for a new building. It's true, there was a postage stamp size window of opportunity about a year and a half or two years ago when interest rates were at as close to zero as you could possibly get. And a timing that anyone with any experience in business would know that that opportunity would be closing as interest rates rise. Right now, those interest rates went from about one point something percent to over four percent today and are expected to go expected before construction can start on this project to between eight and twelve percent. So to say that I was for it, it's true, but I was for it when we could afford it. We can't afford it now. And with the new MCL that we've been presented with, that we knew we would be presented with, the State Department of Health said ten. We knew that the State Water Resources Control Board would come back with ten. There's a hundred reasons why we knew that and anyone with any experience would be able to delineate that. They chose not to. They just chose to say that I don't pay attention, that I don't know what's going on. But the facts are the facts. And the facts are, you need to take a good hard look at where you're heading with this district on these issues. You've overshot the runway on the sewer treatment plant by I don't know how many many millions, tens of millions, ten and million plus, maybe twenty million. I don't even remember where that finally ended up. But it's a troubling course that this district is on and if you don't correct that course and reestablish your priorities, I submit to you, ladies and gentlemen, that trouble ahead is bleak. And with that, I wish you good luck and have a nice weekend.
Okay, Nancy?
Um, yes, where is it here? I just got a question about, we're talking about construction water. Is there is there any? Is it feasible at all to have some of those developers maybe use Garnet Basin when we have a lot of construction water? Would that help the Mission Creek Basin? If we had, you know, a lot of as much construction water as possible coming out of the Garnet Basin?
It really, it doesn't amount to that much, but when but we only have the one well in the Garnet Hill tub basin.
No, they would have tapped to, I'm sorry, they would, they, go ahead. I was gonna say there's just a fire hydrant over there. Happened to a fire hydrant is what I was thinking.
If are you talking about the the development in that area?
No, just in in our district, not in just the Garnet area. I just thought if you have these trucks that go and they fill up, you know, and the in the with fire hydrants all over the place. Well, if we have a fire hydrant over the Garnet Basin, wouldn't it be logical to have them use that fire hydrant whenever possible?
Well, yeah, we do. I think we do that mostly. A lot of it depends on where it is convenient. I mean, there are a number of factors. Once is, you know, if you if you have to haul water from the Garnet Basin to the northern part or part of the district, then you've got, you know, the 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 air pollution problems that you're creating also. So you know, I I we can, we can do that, but the 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 well thirty three, which is the only one in the Garnet Hill Basin, is is very limited in its production, however.
Well, that would.
However, that with that said, construction water is a very minimal amount of water.
Well, when we were under the when we were in, you know, had a lot of construction going on, it was quite a bit of water when they had to for for dust, you know, suppression is the main thing that it's used for and that.
Well, we'll be using it for dust suppression for the new.
They were good.
Yeah, I mean, to the extent possible, we can, we could try to.
I just thought it was a thought, you know, just a thought to think about whenever possible.
But I.
When when we start using a lot of construction water, you know.
Okay.
Anyway, other than that, I'd just like to say that this district is in really good shape. It's always been in really good shape. And lies that are spread about it or or comments that are not accurate, that are just basically lies are really damaging. And but this district has a real good rapport with our community by doing things with the community. And they they think they know us better than some people know us or and so they better than most people know us. They they here in this community know that this is a good district. They know that there's lies being spread about this district and they aren't going for it. They all know who the liar is. So that's about it.
Randy, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll start with a ditto to Nancy's last set of comments there. I have some, on a personal note, I have some good news, bad news that I will share Monday. I'll come in for the meeting Monday and and give that info. But until then, just want to let you know, I feel like a celebrity. I have picked up not one but two personal stalkers. We'll talk about that Monday, too. And that's all I have.
Okay. And I have nothing further and we are not having a closed session today. Is that correct? Okay. With that, the meeting is adjourned.